How are you?
Good. James Smith? Nice to meet you.
How are you doing? I had A T T for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So I came out here, but the rise doesn't work. So we just have to try and provide some A T T. But that's A T T. You can call this phone, and that is why me.
Looking forward to it.
But yeah, my A T T phone. If you call this, I will get the message so I can get back to the office.
Dearly noted.
Five percent of everything comes out? That changes. So if they pull out fifty million. No, I mean one million. Yes, is it how much it comes out? Is that? That's what I was thinking, something like that. I guess maybe that's.
There's somebody in the office.
But around a million a day.
There's someone in the office?
Whoever's here.
Yeah. It'd be really good to panic down. We're the only ones. All the rest goes to the floor. It'd be nice to keep five percent of the. But I heard there's a way to do a. Starts off.
The city council and city. Jan.
Present.
Good. Red.
Here.
And Deesus.
She's in the office.
She's in office.
Would anyone like to leave the invitation?
I'll do it. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we're grateful for all that we have and for the blessing to receive from me and living in this beautiful town every day. We pray that God bless us tonight, that we'll be kind to each other, we'll have civility in our words, that we'll work well together and help build this community, strengthen our family. We're grateful for all we have and for the blessings we receive each day, and we pray for these things. Dear Lord, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and honor this flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I have an announcement to move to the citizens' comments. Russell Duckworth.
Well, I appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to come up here. Aggression once again, and civility is the word of the day. I'm trying to maintain that. I have a question. I mean, I know you're allowed to comment or give statements like that. I'm curious if whoever actually called the meeting and put the agenda and the package together would identify themselves. So nobody will take a chance that they're ready for people to get this together, or do actually call the meeting? Because the mayor said that she just got this when she got here tonight, and so the mayor didn't call the meeting.
No, I got this this afternoon.
You got this this afternoon? So there's no signature on this. I'm curious, who actually called the meeting?
Well, I don't know how to really answer that other than this is our monthly meeting.
Obviously, you didn't actually look at the packet. This is my. Obviously, you didn't look at the packet before you sent it out. Today's my dad's eightieth birthday, and I reminded him on my birthday, my dad gave me one thing, and that's my name. This one, what's my name?
Russell.
What's my last name?
I can be for sure, I think it's Duckworth.
And the mayor, you know my last name? It's on the website, you ought to know it. It's under council. My name is still on the council member list. I'd appreciate it. If you're not going to handle your business properly, if you take my name off council member list. Just a couple of things in addition to that. Financial segment that you guys are going to be looking at tonight says that the general fund cash in bank is negative one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and change. But you've got a tatty little table list back here, that amounts to about seven thousand dollars. Where's that money going to come from? Does anybody know how much money is in that bank account?
No, I made the other day, and it changed its name.
So nickel's worth of free advice down there. Don't improve financial segments that are knowingly incorrect. And if you're going to run this city, take a minute to look at what you're publishing, what you're sending out, what the information is on it, and do your job. Or resign. Either is easy. You just have to take the time to do it.
Civility?
I thank very much for wanting me to speak tonight. Briefly on my background, I have an M B A. I was.
Bill, speak up when you have to talk louder.
Hello. I have an M B A. I was part of H O A board directors in Farmers Branch for over twenty years, president for eight years. I was in supply chain for over thirty-five years, six years of which was a senior position at E Systems Greenville. As I was told today, H C is not interested in coming back again to answer questions. They said they did it five times and can't, and I can't understand that. But then, if I had a sweetheart deal like they have, I don't think I'd want to answer questions either. But I think all this says does everything we need to know about their potential customers who is, if they get voted in. And then, as it comes to the contract, this has to be the worst example of an asset sale procurement I have ever seen. And I've got plenty of experience on that. That's why I mentioned my background. How can you sell an asset without an independent appraisal of it to start off with? There was, there was no net worth calculations, no consultant was hired because I'm going to help you guys, because obviously you didn't know what you were doing. Now, think about this for a second. You spent, you authorized seven thousand dollars for forensic audit to figure out what happened to sixty-five thousand dollars, as I understand it. And you spent zero dollars to figure out what you're doing on a program that you're going to give away over seven million dollars worth of assets. It just doesn't make any sense. You use their contract, oh, the worst thing of it all is, you use their contract proposal as the basis for the agreement. That is, the business one-on-one, you just, you don't do that kind of thing. You know why? It's because all of the Ts and Cs that are involved in it are all, are they all going to be geared towards them? No negotiations, no callback, no potential city liability protection, the water tower antennas, the twenty thousand is going to be going after this contract because you didn't pursue it in negotiations, no attempt was made to negotiate to maintain the revenue, no formally solicited other proposals, no vetting of the suppliers. H C, now, H C has never applied to the P U C for a, for a system, for a water system takeover like they're trying to do with us. Thank you for your time.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for letting me speak. And I noticed that we've been doing pretty good on the marquee, but I just want to bring up again that it's not really been brought up to date. It's doing good regarding the, letting the community know about our meetings, which is very important, but we have two things coming up that we really need to let the public know about. We have our fire department, who's going to have a hamburger night on September twenty-third at five o'clock. This is a fundraiser for our fire department. So if the community would please, please come out and support them, but also if we could get a marquee, that would help get the word out. Also, we have a huge event coming up that we have every year. October the seventh is our twenty mile barrage sale, and we will have a lot of people down here on the square, and it'd be nice if that was also posted up there for everybody's awareness. Thank you.
David Crawford.
According to the agenda, we come down and get a copy of the latest Hickory Creek contract. So when you come down here to get it, you've got to fill out another form, and then they have to send it to the lawyer for a Freedom of Information Act of a copy of a contract, wait ten days and come back. I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous. It's kind of like when we were fighting for the cemetery to make it a private drive. We got it through an ordinance, but the city never filed it with the county. I had to do that. That's y'all's job. You pass an ordinance, you have to file it with the county. Also, I wanted to state on November seventh ballot, Proposition Six is about yes or no, creating the Texas Water Fund to assist in financing water projects in this state, which might help us. Also, the city never told us if we could survive without water, water income. How is anyone supposed to make a decent idea of what's the best way to do for our city when we don't even know if we could pay the bills without water? Trying to get any information is ridiculous around here lately. I'm sorry.
Debbie, is it October seventh or November seventh?
November seventh, sorry.
Minutes by the August twenty-first, twenty-three, where they're meeting. Passes and corrections that need to be made. First of all, we do need to note that Mr. Duckworth's name is incorrect in these minutes. That needs to be corrected. Now, under new business at the Dr. Mudd in that, it says Ford Major, Henhold Special, that should be Mayor, it's been Major. It'd be also nice that we stay uniform and stating if we're just going to use our first names, because I know sometimes it would say Jan, other times it would say Janet Cooper. Officially, it'll be our first and last name, so that would be nice if we get that, or the same way Debbie's name, some of them have her last name in motion. And also, at the adjournment, we have noted here that we moved into closed session at eight fifty-nine P M, and we returned to open session at nine thirty-four, but yet we dismissed adjourned the meeting at eight eighteen, which that doesn't make any sense. So we made a correction on one of these times, something's not correct. So we have the corrections to be made. I would say that. I would not pass it, I would have corrections.
Make your motion.
I would not pass it, I would have corrections. Or?
Make your motion.
Not pass it, or pass it? I can change it and say, we can pass it with the noted corrections to be updated, made, made correct. I really hope I'm passing that. To burn up, pass it.
So what is your motion?
My motion is not to pass. The minutes were Monday, October twenty-first, twenty-three, until the corrections are made.
Give me a second.
I'll second that motion. I would think.
No.
Minutes on September eleventh, September three, David workshop. As far as the adjournment on this meeting, on September eleventh, when we made a motion to go, it was not voted at what time that adjournment was made.
The time is on the table, it's too late. It lists when the workshop.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, but regarding the August twenty-eighth, it's not being discussed correctly. There are no details, it's discussed. I mean, sales discussed, you know, front and inverted, no action type files in session, but there'll be any detail on.
Eventually, since it was a workshop. Really, it's, you know, it's still working.
Okay.
That's just, that's just probably.
Okay.
But I do agree that the adjournment of the meeting, which was Jan, land motion, and Debbie's signature, does need to be listed on there.
Yes, please.
On the sign line with the workshop on the twenty-eighth, the adjournment, we will sit down there, which is praying in Debbie. How about the. Both of them, budget workshop. Sounds, sounds like the, these two are just praying. So with those two reasons, my question, I would accept the, the budget workshop.
All agree. I may refer for August twenty.
Before we go to that, I want to note that the special meeting for September eleventh was not listed on there, so that needs to be on the meeting. Minutes for the special meeting, the June September eleventh, is not listed to, according to this agenda, so we need to make sure it's on the mix. Everybody's got a copy of it. I think it is, it's not on this today. I just think about workshops.
So what are we doing about the special meeting? Oh, okay. I make a motion to approve the special meeting that's on September eleventh, pending the date addition on.
On the council panel for June thirtieth, twenty-three, through October tenth, twenty-four.
I would like to, the council panel.
Okay, financial report for August twenty-four.
Okay. We have an issue with. Footbook at the moment. And so I would like to make a motion that we. Table all of the July and August financial reports until we can have a meeting on. A special meeting on September the twenty-fifth. Give time to get footbooks corrected.
What's wrong with footbooks?
The information that's in there is incorrect. We don't know.
So is it just this month?
July and August. That, that will include Adams, six C and eight B.
So who's got the adjournment?
The, the man is working on it now.
I'll second your motion. It's on the report. Information reports. The council panels for June thirtieth, twenty-three, through October tenth, twenty-three. I've got a couple of questions, I was wondering. Under water, there's no amount there from the fire, from the fire department, Patterson, you know, did we not, from the, from there? Is that something, something updated when I played the, the other? From June to October, there's nothing there.
Patterson was paid in special meeting. So that's why it's a zero. There's a, no, we don't know Patterson anything.
So zero, we'll see this one. Okay.
Well, they really need to be removed at this point.
From the fire department?
But we can, we can add the zero in there. We don't normally put zeros. We don't normally put zeros in there from what I would see it, if we don't know anything.
Okay, just verify.
Yeah, I understand.
Then fire department, same thing, I think, yeah, fire department.
Um, what did RVS say about fire department? Trying to get an answer from them, from RVS, because some of the, some of it didn't get transferred, especially on the, like, the next bill and the, what, what's it, certified? Yeah. So she's working with them to find out. It shows in one place, but it doesn't show in another place. So if y'all want to, we can add that on the special meeting to verify what that is. Um, I mean, we haven't called a special meeting yet, so we can put that on the event board.
Are we updated on the public voice services, I, um, is this a mail?
Yeah.
What we have or what we?
Yes, I think so.
I was wondering on data max, that's two months, so we're behind on getting them paid. If that's taking care of or maybe?
Data max, is that the one we were ahead? Ban it. Data max should be... Data max, this should, this should be good for data max, right? Yeah.
Uh, is that September long story, Peter, is that? When they did the, what, they had to do the grounds here, same.
Who's that?
The, your support long?
Oh, period, yeah.
Is there any more questions?
I make a motion, we accept accounts payable for June 30th, 2023, October the 10th, 2023.
We're not going through October 25th.
Are you going to ask to change? The dating? This is? Return. So that we could be more clear on what actually we're paying, because we have a problem. Well, is this, is this July's pay, payments or is this?
Cross it over years.
Cross it over years. Oh, I understand that. I guess, and that's why I'm saying this. We got to decide. This is a little bit confusing for me, but we have a payment that is, and, and if we don't pay them on this accounts payable, they're going to be late.
What year, what fiscal year are you paying them?
Fiscal year, those, those are going to be in October 24th. Do you know what I'm saying? That, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, October 23rd.
And which one?
The fiscal year is going to be 23, 24, fiscal year.
Which one, darling?
Uh, you know, which ones they're all paying.
Because that's going to have to be a, a dynamic integration in our budget.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. I wasn't comfortable with the dating on this, but I was kind of comfortable in one way because we need to get these paid, uh, in this accounts payable, because if they go to the next accounts payable, they're going to be late. So that's, that's something we need to look at. Oh. What's your question?
I'm sorry, I was thinking, um, but, um, we haven't even put the budget.
No. That, that's kind of what we're, what we're discussing, yeah.
Anyway, after the budget, so this is in next year's budget. So if we don't have, or we do more, how much it is in the finance due, we need to, we'll have to be sure that money is in that, whatever they want to pay.
Are you going to pay the bill in September or are you going to pay it in October?
Well, and I'm, I'm, what we know?
We got to pay it in September.
What we know, what bill it is, you know?
Yes, and that's like, we're going to pay it in September, but it is a bill that's due in October.
Well, I've, I've, correct, we always sort of payables for when you want the check.
Okay. That, that's kind of the question I have.
Yeah. So it looks to me like your payable dates should be from the last time the council met until this next meeting. One of her bills is going to be paid or had to be paid in there, we need to, we need to pay the bill, that's when we pay it. When it's due is, is a different thing. So I think because this is a future date, we're probably okay, and we understand this is just going to pay this bill in September. That's out of the last year's budget, and it's not coming out of October 10th budget. And that quality, because I didn't do budget, that quality needs to be reflected in the minutes, that this was, this was due here, but we're going to pay it out in September, so it's this year's budget.
Or, or would it be easier to just change to October to 31? No, that won't work. I'm, I'm sorry. To September 31.
Thirty days, it's thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
From June to September 30th?
Yeah. From June 30th to September 30th.
Some that have done crossover this four years, I would prefer to say September 30th.
Okay. All right, so we're going to make the change to October 10th to September 30th.
And so these do fall in last year's budget?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
They'll be paid, they'll be paid in last year's budget.
Right, and we've got money in last year's budget.
Yeah. Okay, somebody want to, are we going to go through that motion first, I guess? So I went, went down with that and started a little? Waiting out like 10 minutes?
I think it's seven, isn't it?
I don't know. I, I would call, so we can get this thing going. I would draw my motion, and I'll make another motion, I guess, to accept accounts payable from June 30th to September 30th. Noting that if we change the, the account payable paper one.
But we know, even though motions been made, we know what the budget amount?
We took the motion out.
Isn't that only included in the budget for next year?
Come on. But you've got enough in this budget here. Now, second that motion's on the thing.
Uh-huh.
Information reports, the federal department works.
What's that? No vote of word, oh, DJ's not here. Yeah, DJ can give part of it, and Mike can give the other part, or if we really want to do it.
Use the mic, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, guys, thank you. Anyway, I did find, uh, one leak today on 50 and 39, 45. Uh, take a look at it probably tomorrow. Other than that, all the wells I've been cutting, I've been cutting them this week, and then going over meters, uh, meter reading for this month. So I'll start them Thursday, Friday, probably have it finished, well, I will have it finished by my day lunch. I'm going to go through the week, and if anything's, uh, re-read or anything, then I can have it back by the middle of the week. So then there's no hiccups like the last couple months. Other than that, everything's been going good, at least I'm buying it. Okay. Any questions?
I just don't want to.
Yes, sir. Oh, we got, yeah, we got, oh, also, also, uh, Ford Rocks and Tar for the whole, I talked to the electric, the electrical company, they're only going to be here, I think, one more week, so we'll have room to put anybody.
Only if we can get a truck in there.
Other than that, everything's been going good, and if y'all got any questions, I can answer them outside after this. Thank you all, though.
Thank you, DJ. No rest. Anything you want to add to the, this is every board?
No, I don't hear that one.
You want to follow that?
Is, is that where I present this, or is that a whole different time? I think DJ's done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Volunteer Fire Department. Okay, I had partnered with the fire department to get a report, but I didn't get it. Uh, once again, uh, hopefully get an update by the next meeting. Sorry about that, uh, that we weren't able to get that. Um, but I do want to remind everybody, please come out and support the fundraisers. If you would, please.
C, Administration Department, copy, I think you create contract label, a city hall of own, public information reports. D, Police Department.
Two things, uh, all the papers have been submitted, T Cole, all we're waiting on is a site inspection. Whenever T Cole can show up and come by and give us some races, then we're up and running. That's all we're waiting on. Everything's done. I also attended a, uh, an online class for update for code enforcement last week, and uh, basically, all of this, what it says is, if we have any ordinances, the state law supersedes whatever ordinances we have, if they have a state law that talks about ordinances. An example of that is, me personally, professional, I would agree with this, we no longer have a juvenile curfew in Texas. So we have a juvenile curfew here in the city, but it's now been superseded by the state, so we no longer have a curfew keeping our youngsters off streets anytime now. So there's, if anybody wants to look at this, I, I brought it in, this is all the things we covered. It was a, I think there was 173 attendees that went online for this class. And no, I didn't ask, ask any questions because it was 173, it was a one-hour class. Suppose a good class, good impact. Now, if you have any questions, you can tell them.
Thank you.
O business, uh, discussing consideration on the yearly audit contract for next fiscal year.
Everybody had a chance to do their research. Well, I'll just say that the planning hand at Holmes is $24,000, and Mike Ward is $12,000, and, uh, we're getting the same audit. I think it's a no-brainer.
Mr. Ward, he's firm.
I'm assuming he is, that's what he's saying, that's the paper we got. I think everybody had his number and all of his references, and all he had to do was call.
Is there any questions or discussions? Mr. McCallahan, Holmes, and Douglas have done a good job over the past year, and I know our folks, our, our, our. I know our folks are pretty active.
Can't complain about the job this cost. He did do Adonia's audits in the past.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept Mike Ward as the auditor for this year.
Could you tell us again how much that was?
Twelve pounds.
B, how financial report for July 30th?
We are tabled. Yes, sir.
Still leaking from the water?
It's still leaking. I'd be happy to explain, elaborate if you want.
Would you mind explaining basically why the importance of taking care of this here?
Well, absolutely. I mean, yeah, you just tell me when to get started. It's all in my, my preparation to inform the community and the council on what we've brought. But if you table that till I get up there, it'll be fine too.
Yeah. And we move to, move down the agenda? To 98?
Yeah, you can just go ahead and call him up with that and then I may go back to that. We can go both at the same time. Okay. Let's do it. Hello, my name is Michael Grandstaff. I'm the Class C operator that's been hired to operate y'all's water system. And I'd like to take a couple of minutes to introduce myself and offer some of y'all a little bit of hope. And maybe get rid of some of the division that's, that's in the room. I promise that. Anyhow, again, my name's Michael Grandstaff. Got a lot of experience over here. He's a Class B licensed operator for wastewater. He's got 11 years of experience in the city of Greenville as being their main foreman. He's got 18 years working for the city. He actually retired from the city of Greenville. With that, mixed with his military experience and a super good Christian guy too. Between the two of us, right, we're running your system right now. But what I've done is surrounded myself by a lot smarter people than myself. And for example, one of them that's here today, and I'd like him to speak a little bit too, is James Smith. He's here with TRWA. And one thing he's going to be able to do is to break down how much money it's costing to pump water and what it costs when you turn the faucet on at your house, right? Because right now, y'all, I promise you don't have a clue what that cost is, alright? And he's also going to help us break down what the rates are, okay? Some of the things that's horrifying is the fact that the importance of fixing water leaks. And speaking about the water leak that's over there on what's King Street, right? King Street? My license is hanging on the wall right now. And anytime there's any kind of leak, it doesn't have to be a big leak. It can be a small leak. Whoever's downstream of that right there has a chance of drinking contaminated water, right? So as soon as I find out about something like that, it's important for me to try to jump on that and get that repaired. So to his note, you know, that leak is a, it's not a major leak. It's not just blowing water out. But the fact that it's been leaking for a little while and we did try to address that before. Tried to note that it was going to be costly to fix that. I don't know a better way to describe it, that a piece of pipe should be as smooth as this might be, right? And generally, you can get a clamp on that and repair that. And in this instance, it's galvanized and we got to keep digging until we can find something that we can repair that leak with. It looks like a tree bark, right? And you can't put anything on that tree bark because it's going to follow those grooves. And the reason it looks like a tree bark is just the years of corrosion and stuff. The pipe is about the size of this right here is what it should look like. Right now in places, it's the size of my wrist or bigger. There's no way to repair that. So what you got to do is you just got to keep digging until you find a spot to tie on to it. Your system has a lot of new water lines in it right now. And I don't know without the permission of moving forward and digging up some places to find out if a lot of your meters are tied on to that new line? Or did they just run new lines through the system? You have a four-inch water main running right underneath where that water leak is right now? That, I think that they probably took a lot of those houses off of that line that's leaking right now. And one thing that we can do is cut that water line off, find a good spot there, put a valve on it, cut it off. Wait a day or two, see who calls and complains. Nobody may do it and we fix that problem. If that, if that doesn't work and we got complaints, then we got to keep digging that road up and follow that water line until we can find a place to tie on to and repair it. And what the cost of that's going to cost? I can't tell you. I'd be surprised if it run over $3. We'll do our best, but what's it going to look like going down further? You know, your whole system, you know, from what I've seen right now, still has the old water line connected. One of the fees that y'all are looking at is a $12,000 fee associated with the general manager position, right? That's going to give everybody in this room and everybody else a head to cut off. That's my head, right? That $12,000 proposition, what that's going to do, that's not all going into my pocket. It's going to pay for some gas, but it's going to pay for me to help figure out how this system's run. For example, the problem we've got right now, I can make a phone call on my dime and get a crew over here and start potholing some of the system. And we can start running a, find a map, right? TCQ's going to, they require a map of your system, right? Y'all don't have a real accurate map of y'all's system nowhere, of the water line, right? So that's a violation right there I'm stepping into. I'm willing to take some of the financial responsibility for y'all's system on me, right? Gives me an opportunity to give back, right? It's not a, it's not a hard decision. Now, if y'all elect not to pay that $12,000 and you still elect me as your general manager, I'll still cover those costs out of my own pocket. A chance to give back to the community, right? It's not a hard decision. What I can't do is be a part of something that is a mess and a disaster, right? I don't want a community against the council. I don't want the council against each other, right? I'm giving y'all an opportunity to come together, right? And fix y'all's water system. And this is a great entity for any city, you know? And you're surrounded by a great team willing to help y'all out, you know? So with that being said, some of the unconditional terms, right, is for one. I'm sorry to say it out loud, but we got to be prepared, guys. I mean, look, I've already talked to some people. If we don't know exactly 100% what we're doing as a council, it's free. They'll come in and help us fix this, you know? As far as the office manager goes, it's a mess in there. She's got no experience. I got free assistance for that. I've got free assistance to come help me. Honestly, I don't have a pool by a skater system. That alarm's going off in there and we're all about out of water. It's telling me that pump's not working, so I should be telling that right now. This is more important. Y'all need a general manager. Y'all have been blessed right now, not by just me, but by the, by the team that is with me, that I'm spearheading, you know? So with that being said, man, I didn't even follow my notes, you know? So I'm all over the place. So with that being said, I guess at the end of the day, y'all got a decision to make whether or not y'all want a general manager. And with that general manager's going to come power, okay, for me. And what I mean by that is, when I bring y'all something to vote on, water rates. Y'all don't know water. I know water, a little more than y'all. But I got people behind me that know what we should be doing. So if I come to you and I say, it's costing us a dollar a gallon to get water from there to that faucet and y'all have all the numbers in front of you, we can't table it. We got to, we got to pass it. Y'all got an opportunity tonight to take, when we put a water meter in the ground, I think we're charging $750 right now, it's almost $2,000 to put that water meter in a new tap in the ground. Labor, material, we're losing money on that. The numbers that y'all got right now are still less than what if we were to build a new well right now? It would probably, to make a little money off of that, right? To pay, to pay, let's say a salary? We'd have to charge $7,500, that's from engineers. $7,500 to put a water meter in the ground. By the time you got that water tower tapped out, that's what it would cost, right? Y'all, y'all got a proposition right there, $6,400 is what we should be charging now. $500 of that goes to upper Trinity right off the bat. Did I say that right or is it lower? Uppers. Anyhow, so with that, I'm throwing a lot at y'all. But I promise you, when I bring something to you, the other water company that I currently work for, when we bring them numbers, they vote on it almost immediately. And of course, they're prepared, right? And some of them have already called and asked some questions. But with that being said, we're prepared, they trust in what I bring. Y'all got to trust what I bring to y'all, you know? And we can keep this system. Now, there's going to be a lot of people mad at me, you know? And I'm glad y'all hired him to keep them off of me because they're not going to like these numbers. But we're taking baby bites out of an apple. When you give this over, this entity to somebody else, oh, those water rates may look real pretty at first, right? But automatically, those meters going into the ground, they're charging that, alright? Those, the fees that we're going to have to charge for what's being pumped through that water, they're going, they're not going to lose money. Y'all are losing money, right? So with that being said, I don't know what, much more to add. I wouldn't invite James up here, but I'd probably scare him off by now, I imagine. He, again, he's the guy who, with TRWA, he's the brain behind almost every water system around here as far as the finances go and help in general. I've got TCQ coming out, they're going to help with the office management inside there and help me out here in the field with the violations. It's already currently open, that is on my back now, right? So with that being said, I didn't prepare for a closing statement, but I don't have a lot more to add than, I'm here to be y'all's general manager and it's going to be a package, you know? With, with those behind me, you know? So anyhow, it's kind of all I got, guys. I'd like to work for y'all. I don't know why, but I will. I got to go to work now, we got a well down. James? Huh? You want to say a couple things? Please let James come up here and say a couple things.
Hello, I'm James Smith. I work for Texas Water Association, RTWA, out of Austin. I do that water background. I managed a system back in Central Texas for almost 29 years. I've been here for TRWA for 15 years now. And Michael's right, that's a lot of what we do. We help with financing, be it water, be it wastewater. We have spreadsheets and everything. We come to the office, plug stuff in, it calculates it, barging. We also have another, I'm federally funded in USDA, I'm the contractor with USDA with development. I believe, if you were talking earlier, we have another department called FNT, Financial Managerial Training. They're financed through TCQ, so that's probably who's coming out to help y'all with that. We're an association, like I said, out of Austin. Anything I do is a positive thing. You know, I come do it for free, you know, it's basically, you call me, we'll set up a date. I come and help. Like I said, we did water, we can help with wastewater. I also have several water loss audits. I can help you with how to favor that. I heard the fire department, you know, all these top things. So we can look into all this. Help y'all with anything you all need. All I need is a phone call. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll have a lot to say. Yeah.
Good job.
Do you want to talk about this? Let's get finished with the emergency. Wait. We got finished with that. I am King Street, so from what he's saying...
Yeah, so with that being said...
Move, moving forward, the condition of having my license hanging on this wall, whenever we get a water leak like this right here, if it's a, if it's a financial decision we need to make, then we need to make it within, I would say, eight to 10 hours, right? We can all call each other, talk on the phone and say, hey, it looks like it's going to cost this much. And then we're going to get on that leak and fix it. There's no other option about it. There's not another water system that I've been a part of and I'm well networked in with surrounding water systems and stuff. And when there's a water leak, it's just, it's a lot, it's a danger to life, you know, health and property, right? So even under those standards right there, they give us two hours and then we can dig. Anywhere in the country, or anywhere in Texas, you know, two hours, if it's a life, if it's a danger to life, right? They let us dig. This should be no different, right? We'll give you more than two hours, you know? But with that being said, if it looks like it's going to be a bad expensive thing, other than that, the routine one, we just fix it, you know? I'm not here to go digging up the streets and spend all day just fixing water leaks. And I got people contracted under me with more than fair prices and I will promise you, you won't find nobody else that I've got roped in helping us on this system like I got roped in. They understand why I'm here. I don't know that I said this right here because I was jumping around. This is a two-year plan. I plan to be here for about two years. We're in the middle right now of training DJ, okay? We would like to get his license or somebody, right? That's from this community. Get them trained and make sure y'all are ready to rock and roll. And then I'm going to always be on the phone, ready, pick up the phone, if I need to be here, I'll be here. But it's going to be at least two years, could be three years. I plan to stay here if the community at the council wants us here, right? I'll be here until we all agree y'all feel good and comfortable with where we're at, you know? I'm not just popping in here and looking to make a home here unfortunately, but I do live right down the road. I've got a great job, I've got plenty of other stuff to keep me busy. So with that being said, the main thing is, when we have water leaks, you're going to have to trust them. That's just it, you know? I can make a phone call to him or whatever y'all want to do and let you know we're doing it. But as far as that goes, I need to be cut loose as the general manager. If I'm not the general manager and you don't want me to be the general manager, that's fine. I will keep y'all just like Patterson did. I'll show up for 30 minutes, I'll take some water samples, once a month I'll do back tees. And I'll do the bare minimum, you know what I mean? And then y'all can take care of the rest like you've been doing. Y'all probably have about a year to stand on. Or give it to Hickory Creek, somebody who knows water, you know? Because right now, this system is lost as far as your records, just everything about it. This is a nightmare scenario. And I don't mean, I'm talking council, I'm talking your water and the way it's been managed. If y'all had an inspection right now, I don't know what would be said or done because we got no records of nothing, you know? Anyhow, y'all know this one. But the water leaks, probably should jump on.
One question, King Street, we still in the neighborhood, 3 to 5?
I honestly...
We don't know, I know.
If it's over $1,000, you know what I mean, labor-wise? If it's over a thousand dollars, uh, you know what I mean, labor-wise, that'll probably be one of, that will be the most expensive leak I've ever been a part of. I'm gonna just say that. I'm throwing 3,000 out there, materials and all. I- if it goes over that, then, you know, it, it is just terrible.
Yeah, there's already a whole break that deep there, so...
Yeah, oh, I, I've seen it, yeah.
I saw you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It is bad, it's blowing up, but I'm waiting on this. But this'll be the last time, you know what I'm saying? I wanted an opportunity to talk to everybody, been trying to talk to everybody individually so y'all, y'all know what's going on. I just, I'd prefer it not to went this way, you know what I mean? I wanted to just address the community and stuff and try to fix what's broken because obviously, there's some, there's a lot of broken things here and, and, and I would like to be a part of fixing all this, honestly. I think you can. If it's not, I won't be here long, I'm just saying. How bad do y'all want the water is, is my question, you know? I'm willing to give you my blood, sweat and tears. I'm here. Honestly believe the Lord's brought me here, you know? I'm questioning, man, what have you done? I picked up that cross, you know what I'm saying? So I'm here. So, y'all, please work together, become prepared, let's make this work. Alright? Thank y'all.
So, with that being said, um...
I don't think nobody knows because they're all men.
We're at King Street.
Oh, yeah.
And his presentation, which is tied in with it. We do. This is not a general manager.
We don't have anything published that people get a general, advertising or anything.
No, we, all we have is the contract he gave us originally. It's on there. Right. And it, and it, again, this is, uh, this is a general manager for over the water system only. So it's not like, um, what do we call it?
So I can address that, Director of Utilities, if you wanna use that term?
Yeah, it's, it's not like, you know, he's a... No, I'm, I'm just saying.
But if, if, please allow me, allow me to go further on what this offers, right? Because y'all probably don't understand.
City manager is what I'm trying to think of. So he's not gonna be city manager, he's just gonna be a department manager.
So right now, when someone calls and, and let's say they need some lines located, right? That's not part of this agreement. Say that you got a development going up, right? And, 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 and who are you gonna send out there to find out what it's gonna cost? What, what's gotta be done to get water and sewer over there? Who, who, who looks over that, you know what I mean? To make sure you're doing the right thing? Who's looking over your ordinance and stuff like that? I looked at your ordinance and right now you got seven more things to, to add on that tonight. That's not, you got six things on your, on, on your water ordinance, you know? There's just so many gaps and stuff that need bridged to protect the city and for the growth that you've got coming on. Right now, it's almost like it's the good old boy system here, right? And, and what, what I'm willing to help you do with the GM position is just to make sure this is running like a city should be running. I, I mean, my gosh, we need to sit down and let me just, it, it, this is another hour-long conversation on what, what needs to be done to help the city grow, you know? And, and none of that's there right now, you know? Especially if you, if, all that development going on out at the lake, who, who's gonna take care of all that with the water and sewer? I'm just curious, I mean, y'all, are y'all just gonna call me up when you need me and say, "Hey, man, would you go out here and deal with this? They want a new water line out there", you know what I mean? Well, that's part of the agreement. Your mapping system, when TCEQ comes out here and they run, I mean, they actually do an inspection, what are you gonna do about all the ride-ups? Because they're, what I'm noticing, they're not hitting you that hard. I guess they feel sorry for you. You know what I mean? But I, there, I mean, I can sit here and just write y'all up all day long for the things y'all aren't doing that you're not gonna be able to get away with. Especially if you, if you're gonna keep the water and try to grow, you better have somebody over the water and sewer that knows what you're doing. I, I, I don't know how else to explain. I mean, right now, y'all don't know water and sewer at all unless one, I don't know if y'all lived it or not, you know, but you gotta have a head to cut off in this. You gotta have someone to lead you into this, right? With the water and sewer. Uh, I just, I guess y'all think y'all can do it without it, I guess, I don't know. I'll be happy if that's what you want me to do, to just to come over and fix water leaks and to put point in your line, you know? That's all I'm doing. There is a lot of responsibility with this growth that's coming, you know? Why do you think another entity wants this? Why didn't they want it before you? You know what I mean? They want it because they see the potential. And you're sitting on the potential of a, a, a pretty good entity, really. And you, I think you know that, right? But who's gonna lead you into that? I'm not the smartest guy in the room. I'm not saying I'm the right guy, but I tell you what, in the team that I got, I promise you, you'll be successful. You know, you will. But you need a Director of Utilities or something like that. If not me, then you better hire someone. If it ain't me, I say hire him. Because I don't know that I've ever seen anybody work this hard for nothing in my life. Period. And believe me, I know a lot of people. Anyhow, with that being said, something needs to be done with your water if you wanna keep it. If you, if, I don't know what else to do, guys. I mean, y'all, y'all should know this, we're adults, man. And y'all, y'all looking at a big lake and a lot of responsibility with that, you know? I'll be back up there in a minute if you got a question.
And another thing, most cities, they, it's basically a public work director, is what most cities have. If y'all don't wanna classify it as that, you can say Water and Wastewater Superintendent. They're both about the same. But most cities have a public work director, is what it's classified as.
Mr. Grantstone, could I ask a question?
I think after this meeting's over with, or I give you my phone number, you know what I mean?
Like other people here, they answer. I'll answer, cancel. It's a simple question.
Yeah, I, I'm, like I said, we're trying to grow this thing, so just let it wait, please.
Move forward with the King Street.
Was that the only thing we got?
Yeah, well, I made that one, it was just a presentation we haven't got to be yet. So it would just be basically to take action, would be only on the seat of eight.
It's gonna be kids, so I'm in the motion. We kids, King Street.
Prepare King Street. I'll say again. So done A, I guess we can do it B. And B.
We got a lot of thoughts, right, A, I guess, probably. I know how important our water is to our city. That and that. But we also need a good public works, an outstanding public works, so it's gonna keep us going. You know? Your importance to, of a public works. That's, that's what we got, that's all we got. So it's very, and it's gonna be a strong... I mean, you can't, bad idea. Is this... Are there any requirements for posting a notification in this contract, instead?
The contract? We already, we already accepted the contract.
Yeah, so...
Y'all, y'all actually, on the last meeting, y'all tabled the discussion.
Yeah, we, we tabled the, the addition, additional, uh, general manager part. We tabled the original, on the original contract, the general manager part.
Well, I'm a donor, it's a general manager, like, oh, because he has this original, I didn't see it.
It's on there. It's the la, the last part.
Appreciate the manager.
I don't, I don't know, it's, it's going low fast, though. I'm just trying to tie it. Well, the thing I look at, we need to get this water system under control and we need to get somebody to head it up. And, um, so far, he's done a good job on water leaks. And costs, held the cost down. So, I mean, even if we, in May, if it changes and we vote somebody else in or whatever, I don't see that we've lost anything. I mean, we've got meters out there that, that was one of the things in his proposal with the contract that, you know, he had to make sure all the meters were found and all this, which I think about all of them been found with his help. So, uh, and, and that was without paying him as general manager. So, um, to me, just finding the meter was worth, worth 12,000. Because we're, we're, every, every meter we couldn't find, we were losing revenue on. Every meter that doesn't work, we're losing revenue on. And it's been said that this is all we got, is water? So we better do the best we can with what we got. So I make a motion, we accept, um, the original contract, uh, I guess secondary contract for, uh, general manager. And, uh, put him to work.
Okay, well, we said, we're gonna accept all of his fees he's gonna vote with, under our tap fees.
That's, that's coming up. That's, that's another agenda. He has given us a proposal of what fees, he thinks what fees ought to be. But at this point, that's not what we're, what we're discussing.
I just wanna make sure we're not missing anything, not within another place he was at.
Did I present? I didn't present this, he did. So don't, let's don't go there. He gave you the opportunity to talk to him, I know for a fact. Okay. Do what?
I tell him that I didn't get to, you know what I'm talking about?
I understand, so don't, don't throw this on me. You had the opportunity to take care of this too. So, um, the, these tap fees and all that are coming up later in the agenda. Alright, motion's out.
I think general manager is not the word that we saw on the board.
We're, we're willing to accept a di, a different verb if you did it. That's the only thing that's holding you up. I mean, they've already come up with two or three, if you'd rather use one of those words.
So are we, is this giving a blank take then for repairs?
No, not really. I mean, you, you, you are in a way...
I understand repairs, but we kinda have a... I mean, I understand emergencies.
Well, this is...
I feel comfortable with making all decisions.
The daily repairs. You gotta put somebody over it. Who, who's gonna be over it?
Well, the county's on it.
Well, and, and he already said he would do that. Yeah?
That's why I don't wanna be here with you, once I got...
I understand emergency water, but it's still, um...
Okay, what, what he's saying is, the, these are things that, to comply with TCEQ regulations. Okay, this is not just to make all the decisions. You go to the paragraph above, he, he says it brings a proposal to help better the water sewer system, to take it serious and, and to vote on the proposal in a fast and timely manner. But the, the last paragraph is for TCEQ regulations and that concerns a clear and present danger to life, health, or property or which demands immediate actions to prevent or repair a major service outage.
I still think that matter needs to be known of all these before decisions are put in the law.
Okay, for everything?
We've always ruled out.
No, she, I, I agree. I agree.
Before he makes any decisions, I think it needs to run the verb. Where he makes any decisions, I think it needs to run the verb.
Okay, so- Right, so, let me back up a little bit. So we have, we've got a, somebody comes in and says, I got a, I've got a water leak on King Street. Talking about a small water leak or whatever, so we're supposed to contact the mayor. Which he should be involved. I agree that he should be involved and know what's going on in day-to-day business, all business.
Cause she come, she didn't know anything that was on this agenda. That's why I'm asking.
I understand, but she didn't get here till, she didn't get her package till late, but nevertheless. So, um, but if he's not gonna be able to, I mean, we never held Patterson accountable for doing daily work. And I understand, but we never held him, but, so we got on here just general work also. But you don't wanna allow him to do that either. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, keep us on T C U fines, day basis.
Yeah, right.
Monthly basis, we're doing. Make sure-
A daily basis.
Well, it is daily.
Yeah. It does. To comply with all T C U regulations. And that concerns a clear and present danger.
If y'all can be there within the first two hours, as long, with dig test, call you on every one of them. I'm not gonna go around just fixing water leaks. I just-
No, that is true.
I don't have a problem with that. I'll call the mayor, I'll call whoever you want me to call. I'll add you to my eight-one-one contacts. Just gotta be there in a timely manner.
Well, it, it's always been, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, that you're gonna do, that we've always been notified. The, the mayor in the past, any of them have been notified about a leak and that you're on your way because, you know, and you're calling and you do all the dig test, you know, all that.
And there's no problem with that.
Right. I mean, that's just-
Protocol, yeah.
Protocol, absolutely.
This is the part that I address, and I apologize.
And she gets a phone call, and she can say, yes, have our y'all clean? They're coming.
So that part-
They're gonna call her first.
Yeah, and, and that part right there, don't have a problem with, right? That one there, I didn't have, the problem is tabling any leaks from now on. That, that's the problem I wanted to address. Like if it's a, if it's a major problem-
You can't type of leaks, I mean, that's just-
We did.
He did. Oh, no.
I said moving, moving forward.
No, no, sure. That's just the two that come to mind. I know there was one on, what's-
That was my concern.
Unless it's a major problem to be brought in emergency meeting, any leak, I'll be there.
Again, by T C U regulation, it has to be there.
It has to. I mean, it's not, no answer box about it.
We can't take the, the issue or the liability of causing somebody to get bad water. So-
I, I just am wondering too, how can we prove something that's not budgeted? I mean, I, I'm not against this, but it's not- Well, why is?
I think we did his original ones.
Right.
Right. Correct. So, um...
So in other words, one other problem that y'all go out there other than general management?
Director of Public Works?
Yeah.
Public Works Director is one. And then the other one that, you know, when you get into a smaller community and stuff, some of them use Water and Wastewater Superintendent. That's what most of the state, you know, cities in the state use. So we're not even more comfortable. Superintendent. Most of the phone calls are gonna come through the secretary anyway, about your water leak, so, you know, that's a, that's a real easy thing. Hey, she texts or calls the mayor and says, hey, we got a water leak here or there, whatever, inform her. And then she does the work orders and all that. I don't know if that will change with this, it's more like work orders or whatever. But, but we need to have the work orders so we know we have paper, paper.
It's just that we're a general manager, so knowing what other town you live in, or what they-
Well, they use a good, use the city map. And that's, that's a completely different thing. Yeah. But if you're, you're better with, you know, Water and Wastewater Superintendent, I'm game.
And then that by the council is responsible for setting all the tap fees and all the things that are-
Yeah, those are gonna have to be because that's gonna go be a ordinance and all that, so, yeah.
And it's just a door, so, you know?
Yes. And he's got other people that are gonna have to help on that too, so.
Just as long as council still agrees it.
Okay, so I withdraw my first motion. And I'll make another motion to accept Michael Grandstaff as the Water and Wastewater Superintendent. On the contract?
That's totally up to y'all.
I, I mean, I feel like, um, y'all can figure a price or whatever, but I, I feel like it's worth it. That's my opinion. Just on some of the stuff he's already done for nothing. No, no, I understand. I, I do understand that, and I don't remember, you remember what, exactly what it was?
It was a thousand a month. And, and if it makes you feel better, it's still, with everything combined, still, if I'm not mistaken, about eleven or twelve thousand dollars cheaper than the other company that was running this, and all they were doing was taking water samples and leaving, right? I'm still cheaper than that in doing ten times more work, so. More than fair, I promise.
Okay, and the next question is, we're gonna have to budget this money.
When's the payment start? Is it paid at the start of fiscal year?
Y'all, y'all discussed that. Up to y'all.
It's at the beginning of fiscal year, and that a way, uh, we can put it on next year's budget. Okay. Yeah, I agree. I agree. We're to, but put it in next year's budget. Right? Okay, let's do it again.
So your motion's gonna be amended to start in October twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Next year, but next fiscal-
Well, next year, your budget starts October one, twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three. I'm all.
That's what I have stationed. Okay. So, here we are. Motion's made. No. Motion to accept Michael Grandstaff as the Water and Wastewater Superintendent with the pay of twelve thousand dollars per year to start in the next fiscal year.
Okay, now we go to Water and Sewer Test.
Yeah, so I can come up as we walk through this and be more than happy to explain.
I was asking, um, the reconnect fees for water is at five hundred dollars. I give the water was turned off to turn, and turned back on. I thought it was less than that now. I thought it was-
Let, let him explain, because he, he'll-
But what is the price?
Fifty, it's fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
But he, okay.
And there won't be a problem? That's that was my question.
Yeah. Uh, and I think- I think that pays a little, pay a little bit about what's going on.
I, yeah, I like that one. I mean, it's not written as a part of the budget.
Right, and this is just a suggestion, so, but, uh-
New city ordinance? And I've contacted Flint Grove and Calhoun, and they go along with the Orno front and Flint Grove. And they go along with their reconnect fees or anywhere near that. They're forty-five and, um...
Again, let him explain what the, you can make it without, I, I understood it was different.
So, basically, the way the reconnect fee starts, so, in the water company that I'm associated with, in, in Bodark, and Southwest Van, and, and so forth, we all have our different numbers, but the way the protocol is, is say that, that you don't pay your water bill. We come out there and we turn it off, okay? So it's been disconnected for three months now. We're not getting any revenue out of that now, right? So that's hurting us. We're not getting it. So what we do after the three months is we pull it. But prior to the three months, there's no extra fifty dollar fee or nothing like that. You just come pay your water bill and get it connected after we turn it off, we'll turn it back on. But after that three months, or you can say six months, whatever, figure out what the math is that you lost that revenue that you wasn't getting, right? So I pull that water meter now. A lot of times, all we do is lock it, but, but let's say we went through that process of locking it, we call that now basically a pulled meter. So to get that meter back, I don't know, but to protect the water company, because that's what we're doing, is protecting our water, right? The entity of the water. Most water, most of the time when somebody gets, some of y'all's are outrageous, right? But generally, someone don't get much more than five to six hundred dollars late. Sometimes you got that rare occasion where it's twelve or fourteen hundred dollars. They never pay it. They move away, that's it. Or, or it was a renter or something like that, and they moved away. And nobody pays that for six months, right? Well, you lost that money, and now you wanna pay fifty dollars to get that water meter back in the ground, and you lost that revenue. We're not into losing money revenue, right? We're into paying bills and stuff, right? So to put that water meter back after we just lost five hundred dollars, or a hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever that bill was that was never paid, six months later, somebody wants that meter, and we're gonna give it to them for fifty dollars? I don't know.
No, I was talking about the, when it said reconnect fee?
Reconnect, that's-
I was talking about, like, if their water got turned off-
I don't know, that's not reconnect, that's not called reconnect. That's not reconnect. That's, that, that's just returned it off. We turned off your water. Pay your water bill, you get it on. There's a penalty after three months, right? Or six months. Y'all, y'all got to say so in that, but it, it's gotta be three months or six months. After ten or fifteen days, that's for, and, and this stuff's on the, on, on the ordinance. This stuff on the ordinance, have no doubt what I'm saying here. The stuff that I'm giving to you is to protect your water. If we can't agree on the stuff that I'm giving you, that I'm taking from other water companies, and we don't wanna abide by it, that means you don't want me. I know water. Let me stress that. Y'all got six ordinances for water. That ain't gonna work with me. I'm the one gonna be taking bullets when I go up the houses, or when we lose the water company, well, Michael said this, Michael said that. This don't work unless you do what I'm bringing to you. That's, that, I'm stressing that. So these ordinance, I don't have a college education, but, but I got this off of some other ordinances that are out there, and I put in some different lingo, y'all's name. So if it's wrote wrong, then I'll bring the book to you and we'll send it to the editor, okay? But those, those, those-
Well, we're not, none of the ordinances deny anybody, so.
Okay, well, they need to be adopted. I'm stressing that. But, but this is, listen to me, please. The stuff that I'm bringing to you, is, there's not a whole lot of option whether or not we adopt this stuff, or this isn't gonna work. I'm stressing the fact this isn't gonna work. I, I'm wasting my time. If, if, if we don't adopt that, the money for the new meters, you know? When we take the time to bring you what the water rate should be, it's gonna be frightening compared to what's going on now, I assure you, you know? For what it costs to bring water out. There's gonna be a lot of things that's frightening that I bring to you. But what I bring to you is gonna be as low as what we can afford to do to keep operating. I, I mean, it's just not a whole lot of options there on my behalf to make this work. I, I just wanna stress that. Is there another question on that? The, the five hundred dollar reconnect fees, again, y'all decide if you want it to be three months or six months, but it's my advice to pull that thing after three, because now we're losing money. You know, the moment we're losing money, we're not a very good entity. Three months, then it's five hundred dollars. It don't matter if they owed a hundred dollars on their water bill, or if they owe five thousand dollars on their water bill, that money is gone. We, we're not gonna recover it. It's gone. But we can get five hundred dollars back when we put the water meter back in the ground after three months or six months, whatever y'all like. You know what I mean? I don't know a better way to, to operate.
Yeah.
Yeah. The same person, yeah.
I suppose they do miss the same person. Somebody else moves in.
Okay, so, let's address that real quick. So, so the way things are going right now, we have three hundred plus members on your system. In your books, and we're changing this right now, by the way. In the books, it shows we have eight hundred and something water meters. Because what we're doing is, the accounts don't reflect how many meters you have in the ground, because every time we get a new me, a, a new renter, and they don't pay their bill, let's create a new account and wash that. We're not holding anybody accountable for that. Well, that changes now. That's in the ordinance. If you own a rent house, and that tenant don't pay, within ten days, you're notified the same time the tenant is, right? And, and, and they're held responsible. Someone's accountable for that water meter. It just makes business sense. Everybody else does it. I didn't create this.
Okay, but we're in charge of the ordinances.
That's fine. On my watch, I'm gonna throw something at you, and we're gonna adopt them. I'm, I'm here to help you.
And that's fine, but we're not gonna be told, you know, what we're gonna do, or else.
Then you're not helping your entity.
Well, I think, you know, as a group, as a city council, we worked on the ordinances, and we need to find the ones we worked on, because we give up all of our, um, fees and everything, and so we need to find that book where we worked on this, this year, other than the year.
So y'all are taking care of fees yourself.
Uh, well, we, we upped them, and that's, we need to find them and see what we all decided on as a council, so that you may look at them and see, you know, what you're thinking of what we have already put in there.
And that'll be, that'll be other people. That won't be me, because I'm not an expert in that. I'm an expert in, in certain things, right? On how to make a water system work and run. I mean, I've done it for almost twenty years. And I'm gonna give you an opinion on what needs to be done, but when I see this ship sinking, and I see there's no way this is gonna work, then I'm not gonna bang my head up against the wall and watch this thing go under. I'm not gonna be a part of it. You know, and that ordinance, everything that's in there is gonna be adopted, or I'm going home. I'm gonna take my ball, and I'm gonna go home. I'm not here, I'm, I'm just telling you, I don't have time for a bad time. Okay? What, what is on that- What what is on that is gonna protect me and it's gonna protect the water system. Go over and tell me what is it on there you don't like? I'm just curious. What on there is is gonna keep me protected? What do you not like that's on there? The fact that I'm bringing it to you and maybe I'm presenting it wrong? I'd like to be a part of when y'all shoot them down and and et cetera, know why. So you don't have my back. And that's the way I'm gonna take it, it's personal. Yes.
The proposal in the water capes, this is cap fee six thousand four hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Lower, um, then leader installation, two thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Lower Trinity, which we know.
Oh, and and I messed up, yeah.
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Impact thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Fossil ten hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
CSI two hundred dollars.
Yes.
And then I I heard through the grapevine that the the water bills may be two hundred dollars a month.
No, 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 and and when we start listening to walls and other voices, that's where, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pull in other entities and we're gonna show you numbers. We're gonna break it down where there's no question, right? We're gonna show you how much it costs to draw that water out of the ground and deliver it to your faucet. And we're and we got the numbers to do that, right? Probably gonna take another month or two, right? And we're still not gonna get a true accurate number of it, because your meters, they don't work. Every, but but let me finish. That me, once we got that number right there, take my salary out of it. All we're gonna do is show you how much it costs to get water to you. And then what we'll do is we'll throw in some other fees over, you know what I mean? That's associated for this water company and what it costs to run it. We'll show you this number, then we'll show you that number, and then you vote on what it's gonna cost. Is it two hundred dollars? I have no idea what it is. I I would be blown away if it was two hundred dollars. Yeah, I I don't, we're not here to make a lot of money. That that's not why we're here. We're here to make enough money to pay our bills, to keep water going to everybody, and and pay a couple of employees, that's it. We and and then put a little bit money back for repairs and and some upgrades. As far as 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 the new development going on and stuff like that, they're going to be paying for their their shelves doing that, right? And and that's where I'll be monitoring that and watching that. But as far as what the cost of the waters, you're gonna have all the numbers in front of you. So there's no hiding. So so yes, so so we get a new, a a phone call, the phone rings, and somebody wants a brand-new water meter and they don't have a water meter on their on their property, right? City, country, doesn't matter. They're gonna pay that fee right there. And it's wrote down. That's not, in in other cities, I've got a few right there. Uh, I'm addressing ours right now, my current system. We've had the same fee for for, shoot, since two thousand and five or six. That's probably, ours is probably gonna go up, it probably will, at least two thousand, probably three thousand. And and I don't have that on there, but this Thursday, when I present it to them, I mean, we're gonna do it, you know? Those numbers right there, I'm telling you, you want those numbers. It may seem like a lot to y'all because of the way y'all been running things, but that's normal. You give this to Hickory Creek tomorrow, that fee's gonna be, it's gonna be higher than that. Because their fees didn't have that five hundred dollars for for. And I might be wrong just a little bit on your price, Hickory Creek.
So how long will it be, um, before you can get this, that figure you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
How long will it take for you?
For the water, for the water fees? Uh, what we'll do is we'll see how the rest of this meeting goes. Everything goes great and all, and we're all in compliance and willing to work with each other on that. Then I will ask them to take the time to come over and start putting those numbers together. How long would you say if you had everything, it would take to put together the numbers for water?
For water?
Yeah, yeah, for pumping out of the ground and all, you had all the information?
The rates will take about three hours.
Oh, so you're looking at three hours. Once he has all the right information. Again, I'm gonna stress the fact that those numbers are gonna be incorrect, because all the the data that y'all have right now is incorrect, because the bank's in the ground, that's number one. That's the most important entity of a water system, right? After ten years, after being in the ground, they're running about fifty percent water through them. Y'all's, the newest ones are twenty, twenty-five, up to forty years old on your system. So you're probably getting thirty percent of the water revenue right now that that's pumping through the well. So those numbers are gonna be, they're they're not gonna be correct at all. I got a lot more good stuff for you later, too.
It it's gonna show we're using a whole lot less water.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or selling a whole lot less water than.
Exactly.
Than we're than we're putting out.
Yeah, and and if everything was done correctly, we would have the numbers of how many gallons we're pumping a day, right? Versus how many gallons we're selling. Then you get your water logs. Y'all don't have none of those records. I just started September first keeping those records. Everything's been estimated, you know what I mean? So when you every, you you take an estimate, it could be high, it could be low, we don't know. Another thing, the reason this is important is because a water meter's gonna run us, and I ain't talking about the expensive electrical, just a regular water meter. You're looking at about, I can probably get them for about eighty-five dollars apiece, all right? We need three hundred of those in the ground. We just went through this at our water company, we were scared to death to spend that money, right? I told them within a year to recoup, it would recover itself. We're over six hundred water meters, right? Within three months of changing all them out, and they've been in the ground for over twenty years, three months, they were paid for.
If y'all need that.
I would ask much of them.
Yeah.
So so at this point in time.
Yeah.
I I know you want us to accept this water and sewer cap fee, but, I mean, I I get the opinion that y'all wanna see some little bit better numbers and stuff. Correct me, I mean, I'm just, that's what I'm feeling.
I mean, unfortunately, yes. I mean, I do. Um, and I'm sorry if you feel that we don't have your back, but at the same time, I kind of feel like we're being pushed into this without any.
I'm doing my research and et cetera as well, but.
I'm sorry, I just don't feel comfortable. I just talked to the Hunt County and Worth Hunt County and.
With what, which part, what you, what what part did you talk from about? Their reconnect fee?
Yeah, the new cap fee and everything, so.
What was their cap fee?
That way if we had, um, there, well, I was told it was sweet about. And that included, or, um, with the sewer, it was fifty-two.
Fifty-two dollars?
Fifty-eight hundred, fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two hundred for for the sewer. And cheaper for the water.
Honey Grove was a thousand. And I, you know, just for, you know, you know, that was just calling right off the top of my head this afternoon, because I didn't get my packet, and so I was just trying to get a little bit of information on it because I didn't know. But, you know, at the same time, we, I know that we did go over some ordinances earlier in the year, and I'd like to see what we changed to, or anything on how they're how they were written up versus what, you know, you brought us. Not that we can't use these, just make sure they're up and up. Yeah, just, you know, for what we were doing.
I I know we did.
What we were told earlier, you know.
Yeah, I know we did go over some of the fees. I don't know how many of the fees, honestly, I don't remember.
I can't remember either.
Um, what pertained to like water and stuff. I know we did like, uh, building fees and all that kind of stuff, so.
So my question is, where did, where did you get the numbers?
We didn't, that that's that's our biggest problem. We didn't know. We just, we had old numbers.
Yeah.
And we said we know we need to increase them, but we had no numbers to go by to how much to increase them.
Yeah, so what we need to do when we're when we're calling around, right, is compare entities, right? Y'all wanna keep your water system, Honey Grove, they're not, no danger of losing them. You know what I mean? Hunt County, they're not in no danger, right? These other entities. Huh?
You know.
Yeah.
Well.
What do you say?
I I feel like you got a guy sitting over there who can help us. You got a guy sitting right there that can help us with a lot of this.
Yeah, yeah.
That will answer a lot of questions. And that's that's the way I I see it, but, um. So, I mean. He he's wanting to adopt them, but, um, y'all wanting to see a few more numbers. Uh, so, uh, and I know he doesn't wanna, I know he doesn't wanna table it. Um, so is there another way that we can compromise and say, okay, we know we have to make some changes? We just don't know what the changes need to be at this point.
And we can schedule one of these ordinance meetings and have him come and all of those, you know, dig in there, dig in there together and do it. I mean, I'm not versed in that either.
Would you be willing to do that, sit in on an ordinance change? An effort in all of this and 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 really pay attention to what you're getting into?
Exactly.
You don't wanna lose this opportunity that you got. When you say hitting people really hard, where the growth is right now, that's what they're charging. You're you're taking entities that got no growth, no potential, you know what I mean? And they're not hurting. We're taking what's the potential of the growth, the people that's already accustomed to these real fees, you know? They're coming here, you know? And 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 you don't wanna be in the stone age losing money. Let me, let me, let me say this too, real quick, that for, this is from an engineer, and I don't have these numbers, but I I will eventually, you know, show you these numbers. But if we was to drill a brand-new well right now, the size of what you got right now, to pay for that, say it 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 can hold four hundred people, and I'm just throwing that number, for four hundred people, it would cost you to pay for that thing seven thousand five hundred dollars to tap that thing out, right? And that's, that's an important number to note, right? That number that I give you is not enough to pay for the well. That's what the cost of everything costs now. Just think about that. We're still not at that number, where we need to be. I mean, the number we need to be, seven thousand five hundred plus that five hundred dollar tap fee, that's where we need to be, because we, if Honey Grove gets here and and say we want money to put back or whatever, think about the future, and and that's part of it. Let's be caught up to the days and the times, right? Uh, three thousand, four thousand dollars is not going to cover what needs to be covered for the growth that's coming and the the financial situation we're in. I promise you, it's not, you know, anyhow. All right.
So we can do it. The workshop, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, ordinance workshop. Oh, so. If you don't, if it's not turned on, then.
There it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Yeah, we could do an ordinance workshop together with the grand staff, so we can work together.
We think we can. Uh, seventy-two hours. March Tuesday, it'd be Friday. And then football game on Friday, we got it.
Okay, okay, well, we we need, uh, anyway, let's just type it, we wanna talk about what else we need. Okay, so, um. I I mean, I think we're, we are willing to to understand that we need to increase fees.
Absolutely, that we, if we can work, like I say, do both our ordinance.
I mean, I I again, I know he's wrong, you know, the commitment, understandable, but still, we need some, we still need some numbers. So, anybody got a motion?
Um, I make a motion that we schedule a, um, workshop for, um, city ordinances for the water section and wastewater. Um, and in attendance, Mr. Grant Staff could be in there, and we could all work together and set up, um, points for the, the branch ones and set up.
So just so you know, I I, we got a well that's messed up, he's sharing information. I didn't hear today, I thought I heard it Thursday. Thursday, I have another board meeting.
No, that changed because we put that's one seventy-two hours.
Okay.
So we're talking about Friday or are we talking about the next week?
Friday works good for me. I can't think of a better way to spend a Friday evening. It's gonna be fun, guys, come on.
Anyway, that's my, that's my.
It's the eighth, the twenty-second.
Yeah, Friday is the second. Right at six o'clock?
Six o'clock's great.
Okay, y'all wanna schedule? All right, we'll talk about that. Who's second, David?
David did. Somebody was second. All in favor?
I'm in favor.
I'm.
He, uh, uh, maybe if they ran. We can probably go on if you want. We having fun? Everybody's got this sheet for accounts payable. This is the sheet that we use to make a transfer from the general fund, because everything is being deposited into the general fund. So we needed to transfer it from general fund to the utility fund. That's the total amount, it's forty-six, twenty-four, forty-one, thirty-two. And, uh. We need to approve a budget amendment for that. And we also have to do a ordinance for that. And the ordinance, uh, Mr. Hamilton.
Is it an ordinance or a resolution?
It's gonna be an ordinance. And I'm assuming that what Greg just talked about there is gonna be the exactly.
Yes. So. So we're gonna have to have a, actually, an ordinance number we're asking for.
Probably be nice and kind of sort of have some relationship to the original budget number, so when people look it up, they'll know.
The original.
Yeah, because it's a meeting of budgets, so you could put A or B or C.
Yeah, okay. And. Uh, so this does not have to be done tonight. We don't think that. All right. So anybody got any question? We already approved the accounts payable at the time that this was done, so, uh, none of that changed. So I make a motion, we accept the accounts payable July the first, twenty twenty-three, or August the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Transfer with a budget amendment and ordinance.
You have a second? All in favor? B, set day for a budget workshop. B, set date for a budget workshop?
We're running out of time, yes. So if we do the budget workshop on the twenty-fifth, we're also gonna have to have a, we can do the, uh, approval. Adoption, golly. We can adopt it on the twenty-fifth, we need to adopt it on the twenty-fifth, and we need to have our hearing. Yeah. Sorry. We need to have the workshop on the twenty-fifth, so that we can adopt it and get it approved. So if we do that on the twenty-fifth, can we, can we adopt it after the workshop? A special meeting?
We don't know when the workshop's gonna be.
We gotta hurry up. But. Could have it on the next night. And then, I'm game, I'm just, okay. So.
So the workshop is six p.m.?
Workshop's six. And on the twenty-fifth? Adopt on the. Twenty-sixth. At six. And then we have to have a public hearing, correct?
Well, you're gonna have a public hearing at six, and then you're gonna do your remaining to adopt the budget on, let's say, six-thirty.
One night, okay. So we're gonna do the public hearing at six, and then the adoption on, at six-thirty?
Same day.
No, same day.
You can actually put it all, you can just start at one time, do the public hearing, and then soon as the public hearing's over.
Then you do the adoption, so start it all at six.
I'll second. All in favor?
I'm being the electrician.
Uh, first, do you want to have a closer? Do I have a second? All in favor?